I'd like to call the February 15th, 2022, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us for our meeting. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we begin, I wanted to announce that if anyone traveled to the meeting today utilizing public transit or parked in the county's parking facilities for this meeting, you can pick up validation for your parking with one of the officers who is with us this evening on your way out. That's valid for today only. Going to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board of Commissioners at our meeting this evening. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Do any members of the public have any questions about any items on our consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
Oh, moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we come to public comment. And several folks have signed up. Let me review our policies on public comment. The time limit for individual comment to the Board is three minutes unless you have a larger group, and I think someone, I think we do have one of those. I'll go over that in a moment. If your time expires, you can leave any questions along with your name, address, and phone number with the county clerk, Lamar Joyner. Board members are not expected to comment during the public comment period. This is the chance for the commissioners to listen to the public. And if you do have nine people who will give up their time, then you are allowed to have up to 10 minutes for that group. But anybody who gives up their time will themselves not be allowed to individually make public comments. All right, the first person who has signed up is Melody Shank, and I think Melody is requesting 10 minutes and has indicated that there are nine people with her who wish, who will give up their time, but I'd like for those nine people to please stand up. Keep standing for just a moment, please, just so we can kind of... Okay. And so, thank you for doing that. And then those folks who are standing won't be able to individually comment during the public comment period. Okay, Melody, come on up, please.
Okay. As has already been said, my name is Melody Shank, and I'm the spokesperson for members of the local coalition Reject Raytheon ABL, who are present here today and those who could not be here. We come before you today to present a petition signed by more than 300 people that asks you to reconsider your approval of the $27 million in tax incentives for Pratt &amp; Whitney, and more importantly and urgently, to enact a moratorium on approving any new military industries in Buncombe County. Instead, we ask you to work diligently to attract businesses in the green energy, green materials manufacturing, education, and health services. Our futures depend on the transition to a more just, sustainable, and locally-based economy, which I think is your goal, too. That transition requires that the whole, the military-industrial complex has on our economy, our domestic policies, our foreign policy, and our culture must cease. The influence of the military-industrial complex cannot be addressed only at the national level. We, the people of this county, living far from Washington, need to work to rebalance the priorities of this country from the local to the national to the global and away from the war economy. We need a diversified economy that favors a green transition and the lives and prosperity of workers and families. It's frightening when CEOs of the weapons manufacturers like Raytheon, the parent company of Pratt &amp; Whitney, boast about the profits they will make when tensions between countries intensify in the world. They see conflicts in Ukraine, Yemen, and Taiwan, just three examples, with dollar signs in their eyes. Really? It's only about money to them? In contrast, I'm saddened to learn from friends working in the social service and healthcare arenas about how thin and porous the safety net is, especially for the most vulnerable: people with disabilities who can't get services, people with urgent mental health challenges who have to wait weeks for intervention, teachers and medical care workers whose daily work lives are untenable, people with medical conditions who can't afford treatment or support, and I could go on. Billions of dollars are spent annually in contracts to the companies in the war industry that could be more wisely spent on human needs, on the green energy transition, on a green economic transition. The 300-plus signatories of this petition include primarily local residents, but there are names of tourists who were visiting Asheville. Because the area is a tremendous drawl of visitors all year round, and tourism is one of the biggest industries in the county, we did not discourage out-of-towners from being signatories on the petition. In some ways, they are part of this county. They walk among us in this beautiful place. As an illustration of the importance of including these visitors on the petition, I offer you this anecdote. I was standing in Bent Creek River Park, and a couple of visitors from Raleigh asked me about the new bridge over the French Broad. I explained that it would be the main access to the Pratt &amp; Whitney factory and offered then some details about the nature of Pratt &amp; Whitney's business and the size of the factory. "Why here?" they asked, "in this beautiful place." "That's the question we ask," I replied. "We posed that question to you: why here? Why here in this amazingly beautiful place?" I would also like to note that these signatures represent only a fraction of the people in this county who are opposed to Pratt &amp; Whitney, the Pratt &amp; Whitney deal, and the likely future development on the Biltmore Farms property. We have been on the street regularly over the past 15 months and received primarily positive responses to our call to stop the buildup of military industries in our county. Other people just don't know about it. People don't know, don't want these industries here, and in fact, residents don't want much of the development that is rapidly springing up around us. We know that the construction and operation of the Pratt &amp; Whitney plan is a done deal. The enormous building is well on its way to being completed. We cannot stop it. Soon, the bridge will be done. We know that the infrastructure around the site is also being built up to lay the foundation for more development on the 1,000 acres that Biltmore Farms is open for development and that the Chamber of Commerce is promoting. The new gas line will power the Pratt &amp; Whitney plant, as will the Duke substation. It will power that and other industries that will find their way onto 1,000 acres. We know that the new I-26 interchange is not merely a way to connect I-26 and Route 191. Rather, it is a way to provide easy access to the current and future development on that acreage. We wonder what this and other development in that area will do to the habitats of animals and plants. What about the health of the French Broad River? Environmental assessments that have been done for the individual parts of the project claim that there will be minimal harm, but what happens when development projects in the area are compounded? Those minimal impacts will also be compounded. We know that good-paying jobs are important for the region. We support job development and workers who will land those jobs. Raytheon does create jobs, but as a comparison, the green energy sector provides one and a half times as many jobs than the military contracting sector. The education sector provides two times as many, and the healthcare sector one and a half times as many. And many of the war industry labor impact seeps overseas, thus diluting the effect on local economies. This is all according to the Cost of War Project that compiled these data. Just imagine if local educators, healthcare workers, frontline hospitality workers, childcare workers made a starting salary of $55,000, the median salary of Pratt &amp; Whitney workers. There are thousands of those workers in those sectors here, not just 800. What an impact on the local economy that would have for people like you and me. The fact is, the war corporations just have a stronger hold on our federal and maybe our local governments on the priorities of our country. In your consideration and deliberation about future development and tax incentives, please also remember, the parent company of Pratt &amp; Whitney, Raytheon Technologies, is the second-largest military contractor in the world. Its main goal, and the main goal of all war corporations, is to make money, period. And it makes lots of money bolstered by our federal, state, and local tax dollars. Raytheon received $54 billion in military contracts alone in 2019 and 2020 from the federal government. That's our tax dollars. Pratt &amp; Whitney received at least $10 billion worth of military contracts in those same years, again, our tax dollars. Who knows how much they received incentives from state and local governments across the country? Additionally, 87% of Raytheon's total sales in 2019 were arms sales to foreign countries, filling its pockets while extending the military reach across the globe, not making the world safer or greener. Because you see, Raytheon and other military contractors contribute mightily to our climate crisis. Just under 2 million metric tons of CO2 were released by Raytheon Process and Products in 2019. 5.2 million metric tons of CO2 were emitted that same year by the top 12 arms dealers. These data are also from the Cost of War Project. That's more than some 40 small-to-midsized countries. The military is not a green industry, regardless of its claims about making its products and processes more energy-efficient. Military contractors are not green. None of what Pratt &amp; Whitney, Raytheon, or General Electric does is green, and the entire industry exacerbates climate chaos, something that the commissioners have pledged to mitigate. This well-known slogan applies here: "We must think globally and act locally." The military-industrial complex is very powerful in our culture. There are numerous and varied issues that play into the influence it has gained in our nation, in our communities. If communities don't begin to say no to the defense contractors' glamorous deals, who will? And we all need to learn more about this, so we invite you to attend a series of webinars on the military-industrial complex that is being created by a national coalition of organizations called the War Industries Resistance Network. And if you go to our website, rejectraytheonavl.com, you can see information about those webinars. We are compelled to continue to express our numerous concerns about this plant and to ask you to seriously reconsider what types of industries you approve to be located in the county. Our petition lists four major concerns, which I trust you will read and consider. We and the petition signers strongly urge you to not approve any more industries like Pratt &amp; Whitney. Instead, work with the Economic Development Coalition to recruit truly environmentally and socially positive businesses. Be thoughtful and transparent in your consideration of our future projects. We would be happy to talk with you in depth about any of these issues at a future meeting. On behalf of Reject Raytheon ABL and our collaborating organizations, I thank you for your time, and we present you with these petitions. I've given them to Mr. Joyner. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing. All right, the next person that has signed up is Mike Coladonato.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mike Coladonato. I am a local medical doctor. I've been here since 2005, growing my medical practice, as well as my family in this community. I have cared for the patients of this community, both in the clinic and in the hospital with COVID. I've had patients die despite our best efforts to save their lives. I have mourned with their devastated families. Back in March of 2020, things were scary. Masking made sense. Lockdowns made sense. Now, two years later, we have awesome vaccines, awesome therapeutics, and treatment protocols in the hospital. No doubt, people will continue to die from this virus, but they will by and large be our elderly, our sick, and most significantly, our unvaccinated. COVID-19 is now a cold for the vast majority of us. We need to let people make their own decisions. Masking has become counterproductive in many instances. It has made outlaws out of people like me, who are young, healthy, and immunized, who are following the science and ready to let masks go back to operating rooms and isolation units in the hospital where they belong. Some people will choose to continue to wear masks for the rest of their lives. That is their choice and their right. However, we can't mandate the tyranny of the few. I respectfully request that you allow the science, follow the science, and allow the mask mandate to expire. More importantly, I would like to advocate for the associated logical step, which would be for the county to do the same in our schools. I have two children in our public school systems, so I'm invested both personally and professionally. Again, back in March 2020, things were scary. It made sense to be cautious with our precious children. We now know that COVID doesn't make our children sick or die in any significant way. COVID is a cold for 99.9% of our children. Making children wear masks has been shown to negatively affect their learning, language, development, and emotional intelligence, which are the skills we all want our children to learn. Allowing masks to be optional for children is a small and scientifically-based ask to allow our children to go back to the way things used to be. At this point, the harms of mandatory masking in our schools outweigh the benefits. Let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that has signed up is Amy Parker.
Thank you. And I just want to say, I prepared some words to say about masks, but the doctor just spoke pretty eloquently and from a real position of knowledge about that. He's not the only one. And I have a lot of disagreements with some of the members of the Board who have chosen to respond to emails I've sent voicing my concerns about the masks and the mask mandates. Also, the complete lack of recognition of natural immunity to this disease that has alienated and othered and caused discrimination against citizens in our county, our city, and in the country. And as the first speaker spoke about the Raytheon problem, I'm here really to talk about my concerns locally, all the way up to the federal level, because our federal government is moving to infringe on our civil liberties and our inalienable rights. For example, on February 7th, the Department of Homeland Security issued a bulletin which contains the following language: "The United States remains in a heightened threat environment fueled by several factors, including an online environment filled with false or misleading narratives and conspiracy theories, and other forms of mis, dis, and mal information introduced and/or amplified by foreign and domestic threat actors. These threat actors seek to exacerbate societal friction, to sow discord, and undermine public trust in government institutions, to encourage unrest." Okay, that should concern everyone in this room. This should concern everyone in this country. That is thought policing. That is censorship of freedom of speech, and we should all be worried about that. I look at what's happening in Canada, where Justin Trudeau yesterday basically declared himself de facto dictator through enacting the Emergencies Act. Martial law. He decides what happens, and I'm concerned that that's going to happen in our country. And on a local level, I'm concerned because this Board seems to follow the recommendations from our federal government, where you can hear the same kind of language of othering, demonizing, and fear-mongering that we hear from there.
All right, thank you. Your time is up. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak during public comment? Didn't see... Come on up, Don. And then after Don, are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? It's okay, Don. Hey, Lamar, it looks like there were a couple other people who maybe signed up that were... Okay, all right, cool. Very good. Mr. Yelton, go ahead.
Well, I stood outside, and I hear people talk about Raytheon, all the things that needs to be done. And I heard in the pre-meeting, $29 million here, and money spent here, and the bid for the Baal deal out there was $2 million, and thank you for your comments. I'm not supposed to single some person out, but appreciate you asking the questions you ask, because money just goes out the door. And where does that money come from? It comes from taxes. And you all just discussed something about your underbid by $2 million. One was stormwater runoff. The other was overlooking some things that need to be done environmentally that's required. And I remember when that project was first built, and I asked if they had the 404 permit from TVA. And when I asked that question, you should have seen the looks of some of the commissioners and your staff that hadn't done their diligence. Why? Because people are too busy playing county commissioner. Because everything that was mentioned on that project out there, and the conservation easement, which takes land out of tax valuation, what does that do to your taxes? What does that do to the price of building a house? Just like I said, if you flush your commode into city limits of Asheville, you are subsidizing affordable housing. I think it might do some good for true accountability at this much money, and this much money. I saw on the consent agenda, and I couldn't ask the question about how much money was involved in those conservation easements, because I was out of the room. Okay? Now, you can hide behind these masks, you can hide behind questions, you can do anything you want to, but as you see, the people are beginning to wake up. And I've made a comment, and I'll make it again. We need to stop and think about environmental caring capacity, C-A-R-R-Y-I-N-G. How many houses can you build in western North Carolina on these steep slopes without the slopes sliding into the ocean like they are in California? How many houses can we build here? And yes, we need some industry. Why here? For those folks with Raytheon, and they have a right to their opinion. Why here? We need some good-paying jobs rather than flipping hamburgers and waiting tables. And that's your job. And I suggest you read this. It's a good source of information in it.
All right, thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak during public comment? All right. Next item on the agenda, we have a couple of presentations. The first one is an update on the Nantahala Pisgah Forest Plan and the recent flooding impacts on the region, including our public lands. And I believe we have Jen Barnhart and Dave Casey from the U.S. Forest Service here to help us out with this. Thanks for being with us this evening.
All right, good afternoon. We do appreciate you having us on the agenda to be able to provide you all an update on the Nantahala Pisgah Forest Plan. I am Jen Barnhart. I'm the district ranger on the Appalachian Ranger District, which is, we cover one of six counties. Our office is based out of Mars Hill, and the northern portion of Buncombe County is the area that I oversee. We also have Dave Casey here. He's the district ranger down on the Pisgah Ranger District out of Pisgah Forest, North Carolina, and that would be the southern portion of the county of the Pisgah National Forest that he oversees, just to help with that part of it. So yeah, my main objective here is to talk about the forest plan update. If I can get to some of these other items, that would be great, but based on the most importance is just making sure you guys have a good briefing and understanding of where we are on that. Okay. I'm going to start off just to give you a couple little updates before I get into those slides. So basically, the forest plan would have came out, the final plan, as well as the final environmental impact statement on January 21st. So since that time, folks will have 60 days to be able to review the forest plan, the final version, as well as the environmental impact statement. There is only a draft decision out on the plan at this point that James Malonis would have provided and is accessible online, and so folks can object to what we have in the final forest plan in those 60-day period. They'll have standing if they had written comments in previous versions and scoping or during the draft period of the plan, or anything new that we've now put into the final plan. People can object on that as well, and they'll have standing. What I mean why there's new things in the plan since the draft, if you would have reviewed that, is after careful consideration, looking at all the comments that came on the draft plan, as well as many meetings with different organizations and communities, we have, James has put in a new alternative. So now there's an alternative E, and that's what he has selected for in his draft decision of what we'd be going forth and what would be laid out in the forest plan. That's basically, once we get over that objection period and a decision, a final decision is made, we hope to be implementing the final plan sometime this summer. And that's where we are focused on the objectives and implementing them on the ground for the next 10 to 20 years. And a little bit about foundation of the plan. We are, it's built on four different pillars, and I'm going to go over those, but based on everything that we saw, the collaborative process over the last eight years, it's very obvious, and I find wonderful that folks are that engaged in their public lands and value their public lands as much as they do in this area in western North Carolina. That's fantastic. So based on that, one of those first pillars that you'll see the plan built under, you're going to see one that says connecting people to the land, and that's certainly very true amongst the communities here and the locals. That is a key area of consideration. So in that area, you're going to see a lot of highlights around sustainable recreation. I know that's a concern. Opportunities for recreation, economic development, that is what that section refers to. And then we have another pillar of the plan, and that's around sustaining healthy ecosystems. That's definitely one of the things on the forefront and has been for, ever since the exception of the Forest Service, with our mission is making sure we're looking at the health, not just short-term, but long-term, looking at those healthy ecosystems, really to make sure we're having diverse forests, as well as provide that diverse wildlife habitat for the long run, not just for the short run. So specifically, you're going to see some information up there talking about accelerating and looking at our underrepresented habitats. So just like a lot of other national forests in the east, where a lot of them were slicked off and cut prior to the... off and cut prior to the federal lands being put into place, most of our stands are now at a considerable similar age, so we don't have as much diversity, so we're looking for more young forest, open forest, old growth is all in the mix. It's all to be diverse. When you look at wildlife, wildlife don't have the same place, the same things they eat, the same place they have shelter. They all need to have different needs met, and that's how we're able to provide that healthy ecosystem. The third pillar is the providing clean and abundant water, and this what matters to y'all is because a lot of the water that comes to the folks of Buncombe County is because it's clean and safe water, because the forest, as you know, trees are very important to that piece of filtering that water, and we're ensuring and protecting those priority watersheds. The fourth is partnering with others. There is no way that the Forest Service could do what we do in the past or now and in the future without partners. That is a key piece of our, yeah, I didn't skip over there, key piece of our organization, and we're very excited to continue those partnerships and continue to grow those opportunities. And then the other key foundational piece of the plan that you need to understand is we have it separated into 12 geographical areas, and when you look at Buncombe County, there are three different geographical areas, just because, again, as I mentioned, a portion of Buncombe County, when you're looking at the northern part of the Buncombe County, up where I am and oversee, is the Black Mountains. So that's one geographical area, and you have a small portion in the north slope geographical area, and another portion in that Pisgah ledge geographical area. And if you look at those, each geographical areas in the plan, each, those four pillars of the four themes that I just went over is laid out underneath each of those geographical areas. Those three are the ones that pertain to Buncombe County. So if you're looking at the plan and wondering what pertains to us or to you guys, it's those three areas specifically. And to get to another item here, I do want to, I don't have a slide in here, but one other pillar item before we get into wilderness and some of the scenic designation and our management areas that we have in the plan now, which is what you're most likely concerned or wondering about, where we landed on those. We do have a tier system, so for instance, if you look at the plan, you're going to see something that says tier one under objectives. Tier one is what we're saying that we can do based on our capacity and our budgets. Tier two objectives in the plan is based on what can we do with partners, either with increased capacity or funding, that we can commit to to be able to implement over the next 10 to 20 years. We had a lot of things that folks are hoping for us to do, and we'd like to be able to do them, but we need to be able to do them with help of everyone else who cares about their public lands. So moving into special areas, and this is where I want to spotlight for y'all. So yes, in the plan, just as a reminder, we look at areas that would be potential, have potential characteristics of wilderness, and we recommend them. We do not designate, that is on another entity that wants to spearhead that and take that to a congressional and have them, if they want to take it forth to try to get it put into law. So particularly for you guys, your special interest area with looking at recommended wilderness is Big Ivy and Craggy Mountains. And I'm going to show you, the next slide will show you a before and after of what it would have looked at with our management areas. Again, our management areas are not the same. We had at least 15-plus different management areas laid out. It's much more simplified with our management areas in the new plan, and just to remind you, it's just like if you're doing a county plan, we have to do zoning and figure out what our focuses are in certain areas. It's the same thing with the forest. So for Craggy area, we did end up recommending expanding the wilderness, and so you can see that green, dark green spotted area, that is the recommended area. And we also recommended, in red all around it, that's the special interest area, and also the forest scenic area. So we expanded it to the amount that we did, just based on looking at a lot of other factors. If we were going to look to make it even larger than that, we were going to have to take out existing roads currently that a lot of folks rely on to, to get to some very important, busy attractions and trailheads. And also, it would limit mountain biking in that area, or opportunities for mountain biking going into the future. So to help with that, we did at least go ahead and put in the forest scenic area. We designated that. We already have a few throughout the Nantahala Pisgah, and we just added this area as the forest scenic area. That's that whole pink-red area, and it actually goes underneath where the wilderness green blob is as well. And then the yellow area that you see down to the south, that's Interface, which is we, that's Shope Creek. If y'all aren't aware of that area, that's a very, very busy, busy trail area, which are actually all user-created trail. They aren't existing Forest Service trails. Many think they are. Someone went in there and built a bunch of trails illegally, and even though they aren't our formal trails at this point, we're recognizing and went ahead and indicated that as Interface, just because we know that's a really highly concentrated recreation area, and it won't change. In the new plan, we will be looking at collaborative trail planning, and we are going to be able to look at actually what are existing user-created trails, how can we make them sustainable, what loop opportunities we have. So we have no limit on what we would add for trails. It's just the main thing is it has to be collaborative and be sustainable. And I know I'm going to run out of time real soon because I have the timer on. So that's the difference before and after, and I'm happy to answer more questions later on, but that's the key difference, as you can see. Before, we would have had some areas that would have been active management, and now they are not active management. And so that area definitely has a different management area focus than it did previously. All right. I'm going to skip in and out of that, just because I did talk quickly about those. And of course, economics, that's another big crucial piece when you look at our plan. We know local economies rely on the public lands and national forest land, and that's an overall map that should be in your packets. And then if I can get to Trapplestorm Fred, yes, we had issues at Coleman Boundary, Big Ivy Road and Stony Fork, they are still closed. We did hear that funding is definitely assured, that we will be receiving funding, North Carolina, for Trapplestorm Fred. It was up for debate, and we did find out last week that we will get funding. Doesn't mean we can get our roads fixed and up and running, lickety-split. You know, there's a lot that goes into that from engineering in our National Environmental Policy Act that we need to do for environmental assessments, but the good news is that the funding's there. It would be a different story if the funding wasn't coming to us, so I wanted to highlight that real quick. And I know Dave didn't get to really come up here, but the last thing is, we have been selected for the U.S. Capitol Christmas tree in North Carolina. So every year since 1970, a Christmas tree has come off a national forest. It's particularly out west for the most part. It's only come off North Carolina two times since 1970. We, it has not been selected where the Christmas tree will come off of, which district, if it would be the Pisgah District, the Appalachian District, grandfather, it could be out on the Nantahala. But either way, it's going to be a big event, and we want folks to be engaged around all the communities and counties with the Capitol Christmas tree. Over 15,000 ornaments need to be collected to decorate that tree, and it makes its tour and visit all the way up to Washington until it's lit up in front of the Capitol upfront. So I'm over my time. I'm going to stop there and see if y'all have questions.
All right. Thanks, Ranger Barnhart. We appreciate it. And we've got some photographs of the national forest here at the back of the room. You enjoy while you're here. It probably looks pretty familiar.
We appreciate that. We know we're your neighbor, so we're here to present and listen and answer questions as best we can.
All right. Well, thanks for taking time to share these updates. What, you mentioned the, so the deadline or the public comment period for the draft forest plan has opened up. What again was the date for when comments need to be submitted?
I will have to calculate, but it's 60 days from January 21st.
January 21st, 60 days.
Yep, 60 days from that point.
Okay.
And then you can submit them, and everything is found online on our website, National Forest and North Carolina Forest Service. You can go in there and everything that you've gotten in your packets, or if you want to digest a 2,000-page plan, please do. Or if you're really looking for something particular, please don't hesitate to reach out to me, and I could help direct you exactly where it would be found.
Okay. So as you're super aware, I'm sure, you know, the public interest in our community and Craggy Mountains and the Big Ivy area is like, you know, super, super high, and we've all been to some of the community forums out there where rooms are filled, people have, you know, this intense connection to this, you know, really beautiful part of the Pisgah National Forest. So I think we've just kind of started hearing some of the feedback from the community around the draft plan that's come out, and I think that, you know, there is appreciation for some of the expansion of the proposed scenic designation in Big Ivy. But there's definitely parts of it that we're hearing a lot of concerns about as well. I think, I think the main ones are around that some substantial portions of the Big Ivy area and Pisgah National Forest have been placed into a management category that actually allows the most extensive amount of commercial logging of any of the management designations on the national forest. I have not read this all myself, this I'm just sort of relaying part of what, you know, we're hearing from some of our constituents. So anyway, I'm sure this is not new information for you. I'm sure you hear from these folks a lot, but I just wanted to share with you part of what I think we're hearing from our constituents, too, in terms of some of the concerns about the draft, the draft management plan.
Yeah, so speaking to that, yes, if you look at those management areas, yes, there are some areas that would be considered where you could do the active management in it, but we always want to remind folks, if the area has been placed in that management area category, that does not greenlight that the active management is actually occurring there. There is a whole process that we do have to follow when it comes to that. Obviously, we have public scoping, we have an interdisciplinary team that has to examine and analyze anything that goes on before anything would be implemented. At this point, when you look at the plan, it provides those opportunities. Remember, diversity of an ecosystem is really important for the long term of the health, and there is areas where we no longer have active management in them that we did have in previous times, depending if you look at the long term across the Nantahala and the Pisgah.
So commissioners, are there any other questions right now? I guess, I was going to, you know, not everybody pays close attention to all the items that get put on our agenda. My hunch is that if folks were aware that we were going to be talking about the Big Ivy area at the meeting tonight, there'd probably actually be a lot more folks here. But this is an area where there's a lot of community interest. The county commission has actually adopted some formal resolutions regarding our support for protection of Big Ivy, and so I really appreciate the update from the Forest Service, but I'd also like for us to have time to maybe, you know, encourage some of the folks who've been involved in efforts around community support for protection of Big Ivy to come in as well, to kind of share their perspective on the draft plan. And I'm sure there's, you know, probably a variety of different viewpoints out there in the community. Not everybody sees these issues, of course, in the exact same way. So anyway, and of course, they can do that during public comment, or we could, you know, invite them to kind of do a short presentation, but if the public comment period is open, it seems like now is the right time for us to, you know, hear from points of view, and if the county has any kind of updated comments that we would want to share, either on the draft plan, we would want to do so during that comment period. And then I think beyond that, as Ranger Barnhart said, some of the designations that are contemplated in the management plan are things the Forest Service can do administratively in their management plan. Some of the designations in terms of wilderness designation or national scenic area, these are all designations that require acts of Congress to put into effect in order to make them permanent. Some of, they can be done administratively in the management plans, but there might also be some recommendations that if we wanted to consider endorsing any of those designations that require federal approval as well, so that we could let our state members of Congress and our U.S. senators know that we are supportive of some of these protections of areas on Pisgah or Nantahala National Forest. So I think this is a great orientation on this, and we might want to spend a little bit more time on this, maybe even at a briefing meeting, to hear from some of the other folks who have kind of worked in these, on these issues for a long time. So any other questions for the district rangers who are here with us this evening?
I've got what I think is a quick one, just because this is new to me, and so I have my terminology straight. What alternative E is showing is, when we say wilderness area, we're talking about like Middle Prong or Shining Rock Wilderness Areas. Is it the same exact designation?
Yeah, federal designation, which has definitely certain parameters that we follow how we manage that area specifically. So you wouldn't have anything motorized, mechanical, no roads, those would all, would need to be removed. It's supposed to be as if it's been untouched by man. You look at visuals, you look at sound, all those types of things get evaluated to see if we would recommend it as that.
There's no higher level of protection, right? Than that, that's...
Yeah, and it's, yeah, it just depends on your perspective of protection. So it's really meant to provide that experience to the person that really is wanting to have the experience before, it's hard to do that now, before man came and things got developed. I mean, that's the overall goal of it, the intrinsic value of having a place such as that. But yes, it does, in terms of restrictions and how active management could occur, you would not be able to do any of those types of things. Even now that it's been recommended as wilderness, we cannot do things there that would infringe on its eligibility or recommendation in the future. So at this point, yes, it's in that standing, but until it's written into law, that it's technically really is federal designation, that's when we would implement further of anything that we were hoping to increase that wilderness characteristic to meet the, what parameters there are for it to be when it's federally designated.
Again, Ranger Barnhart, Ranger Casey, we appreciate y'all being here tonight. We love our national forest. We know, you know, we hear from the community a lot, and we know y'all do too, so we appreciate you taking time to brief the commissioners this evening and about these really important lands that y'all are entrusted with taking care of. So thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you, and I'll do a follow-up email, Tim, just to make sure you guys have the actual date.
Thank you.
And I'll send you the links and everything, just to reiterate your timelines for putting in any comments that you would like to do after you've heard from public and whatnot. So again, appreciate it. Have a good rest of your evening. Thank you.
Thank you. You too. All right. Next up on the agenda, we have our financial quarterly report, and Don Warren, the finance director, is here to present this item.
Good evening. All right, great. This is the second quarter financial report. Excuse me. We're going to review the general fund budget activity for revenues and expenses. We're going to review the solid waste activity for revenues and expenses also. This information is through December 31st, 2020, which is 50% through the year. At the end of the second quarter for 2022, you would assume that we would be at 50% of budget. However, due to the timing of revenue collection, payment dispersments, that is not necessarily the case. The majority of property tax revenues come in November through January, and then additionally, sales tax has that three-month lag. So transactions that occurred in September are not going to be dispersed to us until December. So knowing the backstory, let's look at what happened. So general fund budgeted revenues are 367.5 million, and actual revenues were 220.9 or 60.1% of the budget. You can see that revenues, the two major groups, ad val tax and local option taxes, trending up higher from last year. Sales tax has been coming in pretty strong. As of December, it was 17.8% above the previous year. That trend is continuing through now. Property tax is up 17.3%, and collection rate is about the same as last year. So that indicates that assessed values and that sort of thing is driving the increased revenues. The other revenue items are coming in kind of as expected. Sales and services up a little bit higher. Ambulance fee collections is up 43%, so that's the main driver for that one. Looking at the expenditures, the total budget is 367.5, total actual is 172. That's 46.8% of budget. Everything is coming in right around budget, and it is trending as we would expect at this point in the year. this point in the year. The only one that really kind of stands out would be transfers, and that is because we do a lot of these inter-fund transfers at the beginning of the year. You can see general government, public safety, everything is well below budget. Human services is well below budget. And then education is at 53.6, which is where it was exactly last year. Looking at this by category, so this breaks it up by your operating expense, salary and benefits, program, that sort of thing. The expenditures are trending in the right way, and everything is looking really well. Moving on to solid waste, they have a total budget of 12.7 million for revenues, and actuals are 6.1 million or 47.9%. Sales and service, which is your receipts that you get from the landfill and the transfer station, are coming in very strong, very close to last year. And then on the expenditure side, 12.7 budgeted, 3.7 actual, and we're only at 29.1%. Last year at this time, we had some more capital outlay that had occurred, and we just, we haven't had that this year, but we do have half a million budgeted there. It's trending well, looking good. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Don. Can you speak some to the sales tax? I think you said it's up 17% on that.
Yeah, that's correct.
And so what are you?
Couple factors at play there. One is law that went into effect last year, I believe it was, that the internet revenues were getting taxed, so we're receiving a lot more revenue that way. And then consumer confidence has been higher, so people are spending money, and I applaud that. Come to Buncombe and spend money and see her beautiful place. It's a great thing to do.
Thanks for this update. Can you just brief us on where things are with the fund balance right now?
Fund balance? Well, we are still waiting for the auditors to wrap up the audit, but the calculation that we had initially estimated around, I think we told you about eight million, looks like it's going to be significantly higher than that as far as the transfer to the capital fund. I don't want to give you a number, because as soon as I give you a number, it'll be wrong, but it'll be significantly higher, and we will be bringing that transfer to you. Oh, I would imagine if we get the audit done in time by the 2/28 deadline that we have, it'll be probably the first or second meeting in March. Yeah, maybe the second meeting in March, so we can have the auditors present the audit and then talk about that transfer.
And one other question. I think it was around this time last year that you came to us, and the, it was the LGIP Fund, the Local Government Investment Pool, I think, and that did get created. So can you speak some to that and where that stands?
Yeah, absolutely. It did go live in May last year. We have several participants now in that pool, and there are several other counties and cities that are in the process of joining, and they're going through the same process where they have to go before the board and get the resolution passed. As of last month, we were over 100 million in deposits, so it's grown significantly. We are using that for some of our excess funds. We're still, NCCMT is still our primary right now, but as that grows, we will continue to put more money into the NCIP.
And so do you, do you know off the top of your head how much of our funds you do have invested in that?
We have 40 million in there. And then as far as our regular investment portfolio, which you all received, we have 20 million in there, and rates are starting to tick up as people anticipate the Fed making a move on interest rates. So we're seeing those short-term rates really pick up. In fact, we picked up a couple of Treasuries just today for over 1% for seven months, so that doesn't sound like much, but that's huge, considering where we were.
Any other questions? All right, Don.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Alrighty, Commissioners, we don't have any public hearings. Ms. Pender, any items in our County Manager's Report?
Just one follow-up on the previous presentation from the Forest Rangers. You said you wanted to bring briefing from other folks doing this type of work. Did you have a list of folks that you wanted to hear from that we can schedule for briefing?
I do. There are some organized community groups in the county. There's like, there's a bunch of them, but we could probably ask them to pick a spokesperson to come in and kind of share some of their perspectives on it, both in terms of the forest plan, as well as some of the areas that are being considered for either national scenic designation or federal wilderness designations. So we can reach out to them and put them in contact with you. And of course, any members of the public could come to, to share their comments as well, but I think it'd be good to just maybe invite them to come in and share their perspectives as they have done a couple of times before. So, sure. And it sounds, if it started, if it started January 21st, we probably have until around that date in March if we were going to actually submit any comments to the Forest Service on the forest plan, which is not an uncommon thing to do. A lot of, a lot of counties that have Forest Service lands or Park Service lands routinely comment, particularly as it relates to management of those lands within their, within their own counties. So, all right.
My expectation will be the first meeting in March, they can come in, so you have the second meeting to finalize any comments that you wanted to make, so.
That sounds good. We'll, we'll reach out to them and we'll, we'll share their contact information. All right. Anything else, Avril? Very good. All right, we come to new business. There's no old business. First item is a resolution declaring the county's intent to reimburse itself for capital expenditures incurred with various county and school projects. And Don Warren is back for this.
Back again. Eight readers, because I can't see you and read. So we need to do a reimbursement resolution to reimburse ourselves for expenditures that are incurred for items that we intend to issue debt for. We had included this in the budget resolution or the budget ordinance. However, bond councils received information from their tax people in their firm that we can't do it that way. Apparently, that's a violation of IRS rules, so we have to do a standalone resolution to accomplish this. We, we have the resolution written, and we anticipate that we will issue 56 million in bonds, and then by the time we issue the bonds, we anticipate that we will have $30 million in expenditures that we need to be reimbursed for. And these are for school capital projects primarily and some of the county capital projects. So be happy to answer any questions on that.
Is there a motion to support the resolution?
So move.
I can.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, consideration of a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for the Subtitle D landfill cell seven expansion and the C and D landfill phase seven expansion with the Sargent Corporation. And Dane Peterson is here to help us out with this item.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hard to follow Mr. Warren, but we're going to do our best this time. So I am here this evening to request this board adopt the resolution you have before you and execute a contract for the Subtitle D, excuse me, landfill cell seven expansion and the C and D landfill phase seven expansion with the Sargent Corporation. In September of last year, we began contractor selection for this project with a pre-qualification process. It was determined a request for qualifications should be used due to the specialized nature with this project and the desire to have a firm with expertise not only in building new landfill sales, but with experience with mountainous terrain also. The RFQ was advertised, and contractor qualification submittals were evaluated by a review committee. To be considered pre-qualified for this project, proposing contractors had to meet minimum scoring criteria based primarily on firm experience and similar landfill construction projects completed. Eight construction firms were pre-qualified through this process, and from these eight, we received three bids to construct our landfill cell expansions. The Sargent Corporation emerged as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for the landfill cell expansions. The construction schedule that Sargent has proposed includes substantial completion date of December 2nd this year, and we believe this schedule will meet our needs in regards to the timing of having new disposal capacity available. And we also estimate cell seven have, having a capacity of four and a half to five years, and phase seven C and D having a capacity of five to five and a half years. And you should have a packet containing this formal agreement and bid tabulation, and I'm happy to try and answer any questions you might have now.
All right, I don't see any questions at this time. Is there a motion to approve the adoption of the resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for the Subtitle D landfill cell seven expansion and the C and D landfill phase seven expansion with the Sargent Corporation?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thanks, Dane. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Last item under new business is discussion of the Buncombe County indoor mask requirement. And I believe our Public Health Director, Stacy Saunders, is here, and I'd ask her to come up. We had a presentation from Ms. Saunders during the Commissioner's briefing meeting at 3:00 this afternoon where she reviewed some of the updated COVID metrics in the community and, but since that meeting isn't, in our regular meeting, we just wanted to kind of briefly review that again. If you could just kind of summarize the latest information we have and the recommendation from Public Health regarding the indoor mask policy.
Certainly. So with the face covering requirement expected to expire tomorrow, February 16th, Public Health will now move to providing general public health recommendations at this time, given the rapid and continued and expected to be continued decline in cases, transmission, and hospitalization. So just a reminder from the briefing, we did have 67% decrease in the case rate just in the last month, and we continue to see a drop in the percent positivity. We are now at 15.5%. And additionally, our hospitalizations and ICU utilization continue to decline with our hospitalizations in patient beds with COVID-19 well below 10% now at 8.8, and the ICU utilization around 25%. So for those reasons, we'll be switching to general public health recommendations for the public, including that we will strongly recommend that individuals continue to wear their face covering and masks indoors, in indoor spaces.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Saunders. And as we discussed in the briefing meeting earlier today, the Commissioner's previous policy adopted back in January set the indoor mask requirement to expire on February 16th. So that is already in motion, so there's actually no additional commission action needed for that to go into effect. So just to kind of, as a reminder of the process, and earlier in the briefing, we actually talked about possibly voting to rescind the local emergency order, but Mr. Frew looked into it further and determined that actually there's no commission action needed on that either. It also naturally expires if no additional action is taken. So there's actually no commission vote needed in order to concur with the recommendation from the Public Health Office of the county. You know, I would just, I'd just make a couple of comments. You know, I think this, there's been a number of, of course, really difficult decisions around what's the best way to respond to this really unprecedented health crisis we've had in our country over the last 18 months. And I think we've tried to do everything we can to focus on trying to, you know, protect members of our community, especially those who are most vulnerable, our senior citizens, those who have particular health vulnerabilities to this, this highly contagious virus. And so, you know, we've, I think we've tried to make the best decisions we can with the information that we had at the time. And I'm not saying we got it right 100% of the time, but I think that was our, that's been our effort and intent all along the way. But, and I think, I think the mask policy has been beneficial and has been an important tool as part of our efforts, our overall efforts to do that. And I supported the county becoming, you know, we were the second county in the state to adopt an indoor mask requirement even before the state did, and I think that was the right decision at that time, and I think it's been the right decision to continue on, especially during these periods of really highly elevated COVID transmission in our community. But we also recognize that it is, you know, it's in many ways, it's a very highly unusual kind of policy for local governments to, to adopt, something we would never do during sort of normal, normal times. And, and I've always thought that once we can assure that the hospital has plenty of capacity to take care of people who are sick or injured, and once we have more tools to help keep people from becoming seriously ill, which we now have with these really powerful and safe vaccines, as well as other treatment options that are becoming available now to, you know, I have looked forward to the day when I felt like we could responsibly allow the indoor mask policy to, to expire. And so I'm in support of the recommendations from the Public Health Department, and I appreciate all the folks who have taken time to talk to us. You know, many people, there's a wide variety of viewpoints on this, feel strongly about it on both sides, and I appreciate everyone sharing their points of view, whether they've agreed with the policies we've made at the time or not. We appreciate hearing from everyone, and even if you haven't agreed with it, I would like folks to know that I think we do and try to incorporate the community's views into these tough decisions that we've had to make. But are there any other comments from Commissioners about the recommendation or policy? Couple of things I just want to share. One is that although there, once the indoor mask requirement expires on Wednesday, businesses and organizations still have the right to require masks to be worn if they choose within, within people's businesses or other private property and different organizations also have the right to set their own rules for how they manage their space. And so if businesses or organizations wish to keep a mask policy in effect for their own facilities, they have every right to do that, and we expect a number of businesses and organizations in the community will choose to do that, at least for some period of time. And we fully support that, and we ask people to respect that. If it's a, if you just feel strongly against that, then we would encourage you to just choose other places to go until that, that policy is lifted. But we want to respect people's private property rights and decisions to make that, those decisions. One place that we've been notified, we do expect that to continue, is in our local court system. The judges have notified us that they want to continue to keep the indoor mask policy in place for the courts. They point out that it's very important to try to prevent the spread of COVID within detention, the detention facility where people are, you know, together in pretty close quarters. And also that when, a lot of times when people have to report to court, it's not something they can just voluntarily choose to do or not. They're required to do it. And so for those reasons, they believe it's a, it's a unique environment where the indoor mask policy should remain in effect for the time being. I would also share that the decisions around the schools and the policies they have related to masks is a decision that's made by the school boards. So the decisions made by the County Commission do not apply to the schools. The school boards have the responsibility for setting the policies as they relate to the public schools. I'll ask Ms. Pender to comment on whether, on any other aspects of this as it relates to Buncombe County Government.
Thank you, sir. So along with the courthouse, the sheriff's office, and the detention center, we'll maintain their mask mandate for this period. will maintain their mask mandate for this period, as well as our public face and health and human services building, our client facilities, 35 Woodfin that have the family justice center. Those two locations specifically would maintain their mask mandate at least for the next two weeks where they can assess what's going on in their facility. So public face and health and human services and our 35 Woodfin Family Justice Center. And those were the two. And as you said, employees have the flexibility to wear a mask should they choose when they come into the office. But it's not required, but employees do have the flexibility to continue wearing their mask in any county facility. I do want to take this time to say thank you for the staff that has been working throughout this pandemic. They have really done a yeoman's job, in my opinion, especially Stacy and her staff at the Health and Services. I see Taylor Jones in the office with the Emergency Services. So I do want to say thank you, a tremendous thank you, heartfelt thank you for that staff that has been carrying the load for the last two years.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
So, excuse me. We don't have to wear them here at the chambers after Tuesday. Are we gonna, I mean, it, it's been a tough deal and everybody knows where I've stood on this. I wish it would have been, you had the option instead of a mandate. Because as a small business owner, the mandate did not work for us. We had a lot of ill customers. We had people on both sides. So I understand that. But I'm glad this is coming to an end. I really hate what has happened. We've had a lot of people sick. I think eventually we're all going to have COVID sometime or another. And I know the staff has took a bad rap. I've took a bad rap. I've heard it as much one way as I have the other. But I think long as we'll be smart and do everything, this is going to work out. And I'm just glad that we can go on with it and hope businesses can make the right decisions what they do. And I support anyone that wants to wear it in a business. They should have the right to. And if they don't, you know, leave it up to them. But it's time for America to carry on. I appreciate y'all.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. And just to answer that question, so if we, once this policy goes into effect, the county facilities that Ms. Pender just mentioned, at least for the time being, mask will be, continue to be worn in those specific facilities. But in terms of like the, not having it as a requirement would apply to, you know, our meetings and the commission, commission meetings. So if people want to, they could, but it's not, it's not required. Any other comments or questions?
No, I just hope that we respect everybody's rights with this. You know, people have asked on both sides that we give them the opportunity, you know, because, you know, when I come in this room or in a lot of others, I'm going to continue to wear the mask. Because when it comes to Al's health, nobody makes a decision but me and my doctor. But I think we need to respect the rights of others. Because I've seen people out heckling people who are wearing the mask. And that's, I don't do that. And I wouldn't do that to somebody who's not wearing a mask, you know. But we all have those rights. And I hope that we respect the rights of others.
Thank you. Well said, Commissioner. All right. Just, you know, the last thing I would say, and we talked about this in the briefing meeting today too, but in the presentation earlier today, Stacy shared some other information about the vaccination status in the community. And just, we would, you know, we know people have heard it a million times, but we would just really encourage folks who, who may not have been vaccinated yet to do so. And also specifically for folks who have already been vaccinated and have had the two shots, to really consider getting the third shot if you haven't already. We are seeing both locally and from across the country that getting the third shot provides significant additional protection. It does not guarantee you that you will not get COVID, but it is providing a very high level of protection against serious illness. We're seeing very few people, even during these periods where a lot of people are getting so sick that they have to go to the hospital, folks who have received all three shots, only a very tiny percentage of the folks who are being, becoming so seriously ill they require hospitalization have had all three shots. So we want to really encourage people to consider that if you haven't gotten it already. All right. Again, no actions needed. So Ms. Saunders, thank you again for being here. And thank you for our, as Avril said, thank you to you and everybody on your team for great work. Okay, we come to our board appointments. First up, we have the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee.
I'd like to move that we appoint Eileen McMinn and reappoint Rebecca Hertz.
Second that.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And then we have the Board of Equalization and Review.
I move that we reappoint Philip Price, Debbie Lane and Miriam McKinney.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. And now we do have a couple of other items as well. And I was actually not able to be at the interviews earlier today. So Amanda, could I ask you to summarize what additional decisions we need to make on the other appointments?
Yes. We held interviews to fill the vacant position on our Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. And we interviewed four candidates this afternoon. And I think we discussed that we may be ready to make a decision this evening.
Okay, great. Do you have a suggestion for how we, should we just all go down and identify the person that we support? Okay, great. Robert, why don't we start with you?
There was four great people there and had a little time. But the thing was, there was two of them that stood out to me because of years of in the county. And I'm going to go with Dee Williams.
Dee Williams.
Dee Williams.
And Dee Williams.
Dee Williams.
Dee Williams. I would like to echo what Commissioner Presley said. They were all very well qualified, had fantastic interviews and really appreciate their time today.
All right. Terrific. And there's no other board appointments that need to be made tonight? Mr. Joyner?
There, there are no other board appointments, but I did want to touch bases with the board on the reparations, the city's reparation commission. I sent some information to the board, I think yesterday. There was a check-in meeting with the introduction team for that with the city last week. And they are going to make their appointment on February the 22nd. Last week, or the last meeting, the board proposed that we do interviews on the 21st, but they have backed up their timeframe. So they say as long as we have appointments done by March, we will be okay. So if we want to reschedule that and do it the second meeting in March, we can do that. But it's up to the board. But I did want to touch bases with the board on this information.
Okay. So is the, we talked about this at the last meeting. I can't remember where we landed on it. We were, we were, because we didn't, we conclude that we won't have time to do this on the same day as like a regular commission meeting? Or could we? If we start early enough?
We could. It just depends on how much time we have and how many people y'all want to interview. Because what's going to happen? They're going to make their selection of the six individuals. So it's going to cut down the list even further. And the board already has the information for the other individuals. So if you're not going to want to interview all of those, you can cut that down before we even get to the interview process. The board decided last time that they wanted to see all the applicants and try to adjust who they want to interview. If you want to interview them all, that's fine. But.
Okay. So at our next commission meeting, we need to decide who we're going to interview?
Correct.
Or interview all of them? Do we know how many it would be if we just interviewed everybody?
I think it's approximately about 30 individuals. Taken away about six, I think.
So it's still, it could still be like.
Or five, taking away five of those individuals from the city's.
All right. So, so it sounds like at the next meeting, we need to decide who we want to interview. Once the city's made some initial decisions, we'll get that list. So maybe if everybody could come to the next meeting. And how many total appointments do we have again?
Five as well.
So maybe if everybody could come in and maybe bring in your top five and who you would like to see interviewed. And we'll go over that. And then from that list, we'll see which of the candidates, you know, most people are interested in. And we'll, we'll go from there.
And just a reminder, those are targeted by certain categories. There are criminal justice, education, economic development, healthcare and housing. Those are the five categories. And that information that I forwarded to you has that information in there. So, but those are the five categories that we're trying to get individuals that are subject matter experts.
All right. We'll figure it out.
Lamar, is there, I'm trying to get the calendar straight in my head here. Is there time for you to send us, I guess, the remaining Asheville residents who didn't get appointed by council?
As soon as I get notified. And that, like I said, that'll be February the 22nd when they're going to make their appointments. As soon as I get that, I will immediately send that information out to the board.
Thank you.
I think we should probably talk about this at the briefing meeting. This is kind of complicated. So we should, we should talk, so we don't want to put this off to the end of like our next meeting. Let's talk about it at the briefing meeting and come up with a game plan for who to interview. And we might need to call a special meeting for the interviews. Or maybe once we've narrowed it down, it'll be apparent that we could just do it before our next meeting. But let's put it on the briefing agenda. All right. Very good. Mr. Joyner, anything else? Mr. Frue, do we need a closed session for any purpose? All right. The next meeting of the Buncombe County Commission will be on March 1st at 3:00 PM. That'll be the commissioner's briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On March 1st at 5:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold a regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.